If y'all would stand with us, we'll go ahead and get started. We're waiting on all the commissioners and the judge. Judge is got tied up for a few minutes. He said he'd be in a little bit. Boy, it's John, latest in the case.
Heavenly Father, we thank you today for the opportunity to come here, Lord, and discuss ten of the county's business. I pray that you'll bless us as we start organizing our thoughts and making a plan for our future. And you'll just continue to bless it like you have so far. Be with all the sick in the county today, Lord, and the first responders, and protect them and keep them safe. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its liberty, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is July the 14th. It's five minutes after 10:00. And we're going to go ahead and get started. This is a workshop with Mark Taylor with Trailer and Associates. And he's going to go over some stuff with us. And we, I think we've got some questions and all for him. I'm going to go ahead and let Barbara start with some of it, and then he's going to kind of give us an overview of what we've got, what we can and can't do. Barbara?
Thank you. Thanks. Good morning, Mr. Taylor. Well, why don't you just come stand right here. I do want to go on record as saying that this is our second meeting for those of you who are here today. We've had one other meeting. This is Mark Taylor. He's with Trailer and Associates out of Tyler. They are our grant administrator. This grant is over $6 million and comes with a lot of strings attached. And so that's why we have a grant administrator, because he's got expertise in that area. And we're going to let him go over some of those strings and some of those requirements, and then if he has some questions after that. Let me tell you why we're doing it like this. We want to make sure that if you want to make a request or something before the court, Judge Lee is detained for a few minutes, and we want to make sure that he's here to hear what it is you have to say. So we're going to let y'all learn a little bit about it, and then he'll be here in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I appreciate the opportunity to be before you again today. As far as ARPA program, we kind of talked about the basics of it last time, and generally what you can, can't do. The four different categories that the funds can be put in, one of which is lost revenue, which the county did elect to put all of your ARPA funds in the lost revenue category. Once again, that does give you a little more leeway with the funds, but you still got all the red tape out there, you still got all the hoops and loops that you have to go through. One of those is procurement. And we've talked a little bit about that. We worked with Ms. Barbara, got y'all drafted a procurement policy, which has been presented to y'all, been adopted. That's pretty much going to come into play on any dime you spend. And basically, once again, to go back and kind of recap, when the Fed looks at procurement, especially with the ARPA funds, what they're looking at is the most stringent procurement policy that could apply to you. And with an entity in the state of Texas, that goes down to the local level. If they have local procurement policies, then it goes up to the state, state statutes as it pertains to procurement, and then it goes up to the Fed level. And what we do is we assist y'all with the various items that you'll have coming up. We look at those procurement policies and we say, okay, of this, which is going to be most stringent as it pertains to this specific item, or this specific project or so forth? And then we'll work with the county on moving forward with the procurement as it pertains to that. Once again, it's a lot of hoops and loops there. And what we're here for is to keep you between the ditches, keep you going down the middle of the road, and we'll work with you hand in hand all the way through it. On the procurement, sometimes some of it seems kind of ridiculous. I'll be the first to agree to it. But once again, it's their ballgame, so we've got to play by their rules. And that's how we're going to do with that. Before we kind of go into any other questions y'all might have, do you have any general questions or specific questions as it pertains to procurement itself?
How long, okay, we get going, say I'm turning in a bid for a dump truck or something. How long you think it'd be before that actually gets approved and say, the bids get back and y'all, we choose whoever we choose to buy from? Just to get to that point, how long you think that's going to take? How long do the bids go out for when you finally get started on a bid?
Once you place your initial notice out there, it's got to go for at least 14 days from that date.
Okay.
You cannot open bids until at least 14 days after that. And is that y'all's customary policy as well?
Yeah.
And that's pretty well standard all the way up.
Okay. Now go quick.
I didn't want to cost you anything, though. It's 14 days from when we get in the newspaper. There's a whole lot of work that has to happen before that with regard to the specifications.
Yeah, specs and stuff, that's...
That is long. It's long and very involved. So the standard applies, 14 days. We'll put it in the newspaper, we'll wait 14 days, it'll be in the newspaper class, we'll open those, come to court. But the work that's going to be done is going to be way before that, and that can take a fair amount of time.
And that's like, things I've turned in, I already thought about options I need on certain dump trucks or backhoe. These backhoes need to be comparable with like a four-way bucket on the front. So y'all will call whoever turned the bid in, like my number's on there, you can call me and say, hey, does this sound good to you? We're going to try to bid this out, the specs. We'll see that first.
Now, when you get down to specs, and once again, it's pretty well spelled out in the procurement policy, you cannot be any more specific than what you need for that particular item. And what I say by that...
No brand?
Yeah. Like, I've got an old Case 480C backhoe. You can't say Case 480C. You can specify the horsepower you need, you can specify the size of bucket you need, you can specify what you need in that piece of equipment, but you cannot specify a specific brand. Now, the exception to that are, and let's say you have an old 480C backhoe, and you need a new bucket for that. Only thing that's going to fit that is a Case bucket.
Yeah.
In which case, you can specify a bucket to fit a Case 480C backhoe. And there again, you get into, is it sole source procurement, or is it competitive procurement? And when we look at sole source, what we're looking at is, it's only one manufacturer that provides whatever that item is, and there's also only one distributor to that item. And so most of the time, you're really not going to get down to sole source, but every now and then that does come into play. And that's one of the things we look at, is which category is this procurement going to fall into, and how will we move forward with it? With that being said, I don't know about the co-ops, if the county has historically worked with any of the by-board or H-Backpack...
We have.
That is allowable. But with that being said, whatever item it is you're proposing to purchase through them, we have to ensure that they have already gone through all the hoops and loops for procurement.
Okay.
So before we can go forward with something like that, we have to have copies of the ads they ran in the paper. We've got to have the dates they ran, the publisher's affidavit, the whole nine yards, just as if y'all were doing that procurement internally. We've got to have all that documentation.
One more thing I'd like for you to talk about, please. The use of a, if we have someone give us a quote or something like that, then they can not participate in the bidding process. Am I saying that right? I mean, they can give us a quote. There's, I know that there's a fine line there between who can participate with those things, like say, the diner, and then who to be in.
Right, right. And what she's referring to is what they call the conflict of interest. And basically, whether that is an entity, whether it's a firm, whether it's an individual, if they have done anything with the county that would potentially create a, what's referred to as a conflict of interest, or basically give them a step up, then they cannot participate in that bidding process itself. As an example of that, years ago, as a consulting firm, we've been working with cities and counties a little over 48 years now. And forever and today, somebody'd call us up and say, hey, there's an application cycle coming up. Do you think we might qualify? And we'd say, yeah. And they'd say, okay, we want to submit an application. We'd say, all right. We'd get with them. We'd write the application up, we'd submit it. And as y'all, well, y'all may not know, but in government, the wheels turn kind of slow sometimes. So with the grant application, it might be a year, year and a half before we know if that grant's going to be funded. And then they call up and they say, hey, that grant we submitted a year and a half ago got funded. And we'll say, okay, now you need to go out for procurement for a grant administrator. You need to go ahead and pull the trigger, spend the money for the newspaper ads and so forth, because you know it's going to move forward. They came back about eight years ago and said, no, you can't do that. That will be considered a conflict of interest as we go forward. You have already participated in that project, you're already familiar with that project. Whatever that entity is, whether it's a city or a county, they, whether they rightfully so or not, they could potentially feel some obligation to you due to the fact that you've already done work on that project. So you could not be considered to be hired to administer that project. And that goes, that's whether it's a grant administrator, whether it's an engineer. And that's not to say that you could not work with an engineer that you've worked with previously, that's familiar with the county. But you cannot work with an engineer on a project that that engineer has already been involved in that project, already, or has already gone out and done the initial scope or design of that project. Same thing kind of following through on the conflict of interest, and this is kind of a little bit different. That part of the conflict of interest pertains to anybody that has been involved in that activity in whatever manner previously. Now, and there is a little gray area there, just like, once again, y'all procured us, y'all went through the procurement process and the steps to hire us. That doesn't mean we can't work for y'all and anything else. Means we can't get down in the weeds with it. We can come to y'all and say, hey, there's a grant opportunity coming up, another six months, seven months, through this agency, you might want to take a look at it. And if so, you need to go ahead and start your procurement process. That's not, we wouldn't have any inside knowledge on the project at that point in time. And that's the type of things they're looking at. Does anybody have inside knowledge? Have they done anything in conjunction with that, either been compensated or not compensated, that would make the individuals or making that determination feel that they kind of need to lean in that direction? That got that one about clear as mud?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Once again, that goes back to state statutes as well as federal policies as it relates to conflict of interest. And where else I was going with that, and I got sidetracked, y'all, y'all have to excuse me, I start chasing rabbits sometimes. But it's also a potential conflict of interest, and I think y'all are fully aware, if you're going out for bids on a project, and it's someone that's very closely associated with you, relative, kinfolk, sister, brother, aunt, uncle, or whatever, that's providing that service, that is a potential conflict of interest. That is something that would have to be looked at. It's something that would have to be made known and address the fact that, hey, this is my cousin that owns this dealership that sells these dump trucks, and we want the world to know it, that, you know, it's one of the two folks in this area that sell them, and it's not a conflict, but we want to address it and make sure everybody knows that we're being upfront and open with this. And that's the big thing that the feds look at, is everything needs to be above board, it needs to be in the open, it needs to be competitive. Everybody needs to have the same opportunity of proposing on those federal dollars. And that's one of the reasons it gets back to the proposing process and so forth. One of the counties we're working with, I was visiting with them a couple of weeks ago, and they said, all right, we've gone through all the hoops, we've gone through all the loops, we've procured you, we've got you working for us on these ARPA funds, now we want you to work on this grant and this grant. Okay, do that. You didn't procure us for those grants, you procured us for ARPA. And that's the only thing we can work on for you without creating a conflict of interest. And there again, the way the feds look at that, it could be, and let's say it's a tech dot project. There are folks out there that all they do are tech dot projects. They have no interest in ARPA, don't know what ARPA stands for, would not have proposed on that procurement process. So the feds are saying that it would not be open and fair competition for us to do a tech dot project when we were procured and all of the information related to the ARPA contract. Everything y'all wanted to know, and then some more, probably.
Anybody else have anything, any questions for him at this time?
I have a couple of questions. I think that there's a report that's due July the 31st. And of course, we've not expended anything, but can y'all do that for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you need anything from us? I mean, none, but I don't know what else is on there.
And to be honest with you, I've just looked at it briefly, and I'll get back with you on it. Yeah, we will be in the big middle of submitting that report.
Okay. Is it okay if I just continue? I believe that individuals or businesses who got money through the CARES Act may not receive ARPA funds. Is that correct? And let me tell you where I saw that. I was reading on the auditor list serve, you know, statewide, the auditors have, you know, a list serve, and that was included in there. And so we, I don't know that we've had anyone request funds, except possibly the hospital. They may have gotten funds through the CARES Act.
Yeah, they did.
And I think that the requirement is that if they did get funds through the CARES Act, then they can't take ARPA funds as well. But that's something we'll need for you to check off, because I know that they requested funds. That's the only one I'm aware of. Now, I've also gotten a request from Erin Gann at Tri-Sud, and I don't have any idea whether they got any funds through the CARES grant.
And I will definitely follow up on that. That is the first time I've heard that.
Okay.
And so I am not aware of that, and it could go back to interpretation that someone had on it. I can tell you that through the CARES Act, a lot of hospitals did receive funding. A lot can, with that being said, hospitals even received ARPA funds. The larger hospitals received a direct allocation of ARPA funds. But then again, they also come out to the municipalities and counties in some instances requesting those ARPA funds. I can tell you the guidance that's within the final rules. It references hospitals qualifying to receive ARPA funds through an entity. So I think that could go back to someone's interpretation as it related to the CARES Act, but we will definitely follow up on that.
I have those some statutes, or whatever was attached, I'll send you that.
If you could send me that, that'd be fantastic.
Okay.
Mark, I've got one question. On our request for the ARPA funding form that you sent us, do we need to fill those out individually for, say, we've got a couple of three that we need to fill out each one?
Each request? Yes, sir. If you would, fill one out for each request. Now, what we do, when those forms are forwarded to us, first we review it, see if we need any additional clarification on it. Then we stand that up against the ARPA rules and the ARPA eligible expenses. Now, there again, I'm not trying to muddy the water, but once again, we talked last time about the four boxes that all the funds had to fit in. We check and see if it's going to fit in one of them other three boxes. If it does, then that's the initial code we give it for coding purposes. We can say, yeah, it definitely fits in this other box. Now, if it doesn't fit in any of those other boxes, then we look at the lost revenue box and say, okay, is this going to fit in the lost revenue box? And there again, as far as expenditures in the lost revenue, it is basically anything that a county would typically spend county funds on. Again, there are a few exceptions in there. We talked about those last time, but to kind of just real briefly go over those again. You cannot go back, you cannot pay off prior lawsuits with those funds, you cannot put it in a rainy day fund for future expenditures. They frown on a couple of things to spending those funds on. Ones are jailed prison facilities. They didn't say that you can't do it. They said in most instances, it's preferred not. To me, that relates to, yeah, we don't want you to do it unless you can justify it to us, and then you need to run it up the black pole, and let's make sure we buy off on it. Same thing with civic centers and the things along those lines.
Another thing that I had thought about too is dinner. Towards the bottom of the request form, it's got quotes, we have photos, anything like that. Will, if we've got, or if we go out and request a quote on, like John was talking about for a dump truck, just to kind of see what we're looking at, does that eliminate them from being able to bid on it?
No, that would not eliminate them. Now, if you have your full spec list and say, we're going to be going out for bid on this in another three weeks, go ahead and give me your best price on it. That would be a conflict. If you just call up a dealership and say, hey, I need a two-ton truck with a five-yard bed, you know, can you give me a ballpark idea of what we're looking at? That is not a conflict.
Okay.
On those forms, once again, as you referenced, we ask for support documentation. That's, you know, you do what you can. It's not something that's got to be there. It's just the more information we can get with that, the easier it is for us to determine the coding of it and which category it would fall into, and whether it would or would not be an eligible activity, and how we would need to go forward with procurement if y'all also elected to go forward with that particular item.
Do we, would we need to list, say, we're putting in a request for some road work? We need to list, would it be better if we listed the roads that we want to do it on, or is it just an overall?
It would be better if you could specify the road.
Okay.
So I have a question about that. You're speaking of road materials. You're not looking to have somebody come out and, I mean, because we can do either one of those, I'm just trying to get my head around what you're...
Yeah, we're talking about the materials and our labor and for us to do that.
Okay, using your force account, labor and just materials?
Yeah.
Okay. And I appreciate you asking for that clarification. In that case, you would not have to specify the road. Now, what we would have to do is go back and take a look at, okay, when you procured these materials, and it's typically done on an annual basis, and we discussed that as far as the county doing that, we have to document, once again, that y'all went through the proper procurement procedures in that procurement. Now, to follow up on that, once that material is obtained, if we're covering part of that expense with ARPA funds, at that point in time, we've got to know what road it went You know, so many, so many tons of oil sand went on county road 1375 this date, or however it needs to be documented, we need to back in and know, all right, here's where the material was purchased, it meets all the procurement criteria, here's where it went out the door, and here's where it went. That way, if and when you're ever audited, we've got the paper trail to support the whole thing. We can drive them out there if need be and say, here it is.
So would that work if we just had, asked the commissioners to add that county road number, like to the invoice when it comes in? Would that meet that requirement?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine.
I think that's an easy way for us to do that.
Now, there again, and it varies a little bit, but customarily, and once again, it goes back to, are you picking up the material, or is the material being delivered out to the job site? If it's being delivered to the job site, customarily, there's trip tickets that specify the county road they're taking that out to. And to support our documentation, we usually ask for copies of those trip tickets to put in the file. And that substantiates the quantity that came out and where it went to.
I've had, I've had some that have dumped it, you know, and brought to my yard, brought it to my yard and dumped it.
Yeah, in which case, once again, as it's, would have to document, of course, it coming into the yard, and then as it goes out, and it doesn't have to be fancy, guys, you know, just whatever you can get us that we can put in the file to substantiate that. You know, on July the 14th, we had five, five-yard loads of this material leave the yard, and it was put on county road such and such.
All right. Are we going to go down these bids that we've turned in per department, or what should we do?
I think we probably should. I don't know if we want to do that now, if we want to wait on Judge Lee. I don't know. Some of these are items that we talked about at the first meeting. So some of these are items we talked about at our first meeting, so there wouldn't be anything new about that. Would y'all like to start through with those?
Yeah.
Judge Lee sent me his, just, I don't know if it was, I got them this morning, it might have been last night. And I'll get these to you, Mark. But he doesn't have anything attached. The first one is three plus million dollars, discussions with telecom company, broadband expansion in certain parts of the county. I think that we've talked about that before, and we have the requirement of the certain zones. What are the zones? The, you gave us the map with the certain zones.
Yeah.
So I don't know if this would...
Qualified census tract.
Yes, yeah, zones. So I don't know if this would meet those requirements, but I'll get that to you. The next one he turned in is, and again, these are things we've already discussed that he mentioned at our last meeting, $50,000 for Northeast Texas short line railroad infrastructure repairs. Titus County is one of six member counties. One county has already contributed $50,000. I feel sure that there are some requirements for us getting fixed amounts of money without knowing what the use of those are.
Yes, ma'am, there is.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that, and that follows all the way through, and once again, till those funds are ultimately expended. And best way I can describe it is, until it gets to the point, we can physically go out there and say, this is what those funds were used for, we have to track it. We have to, we have to track the procurement procedures that were done. Now, whether, and using that as an example, whether the county goes out and procures 400 railroad ties and gives it to the railroad, or whether the county gives the railroad money to procure 400 railroad ties, that procurement process has to be gone through. They can't just pick up the phone and call their supplier and say, hey, we got some money, bring us out 400 ties. We've got to know the procurement process that was gone through. And once again, that follows all the way through. The county does still have liability for those funds and for the ultimate expenditure of those funds, and ensuring the fact that all the procurement procedures were followed accordingly.
Okay, the other one is the hospital request. Okay, the other one is the hospital request, $180,000 for the reimbursement for cost of temporary personnel during COVID. I think that you've already told us reimbursements don't work.
Reimbursements do not work, and I've visited with the hospital briefly on that, and they're looking at some items there. And of course, with COVID, with employees, especially nurses, it got very competitive with the nurses around, getting nurses to come in. They were having to provide astronomical bonuses to get nurses to come into some places, and then the hourly rate, a lot of places were paying $90, $100 an hour for a nurse, after paying $10,000, $15,000 bonus to get them to come home for a 90-day contract. What we have to look at, and let's just use nurses as an example, that's one of the things we can take a look at, but if that cost was passed on to the patient, and that, that cost was covered, you can't basically, what I call double dip on it. You can't have been compensated for that expense and then seek reimbursement through the ARPA funds for that expenditure as well. It has to be an expense that they incurred over and above while they are getting reimbursed for their patient care. We do have some entities we're working with that are working with hospitals on it. There are definitely expenditures that are eligible, but once again, we just have to review it. We have to coordinate with them, ensure that it is an eligible expenditure, and it's not being reimbursed in some other manner.
The other one, the last one that Judge Lee turned in was, his note says for discussion only. Anticipated cost of $5 million for conversion of the jail basement to usable inmate facilities. If y'all will recall, Sheriff Ingram mentioned that to us during the budget. So, I think Ryan basically put together everything that we had talked about, you know, from his point of view, the big ticket items. This is a lot of money right here, but I'll send these to you.
Okay, thank you very much. And real briefly on that, just kind of a 30,000-foot level, once again, in, in the final rules, they do kind of frown on that. That's not to say it could not be an eligible expenditure, but I'd be more comfortable with us submitting that to the Treasury with the justification why it's needed. And basically, what the Treasury is looking at, and it is referenced in the final rule or in some of the questions and answers, what they're looking at is activities that, for the most part, there's always going to be some exceptions and some little nuances that's going to benefit your county and the citizens as a whole. And I know there's a lot of discussion, well, the jail benefits everybody, but, and it does, but that expenditures having to be incurred for those that, for whatever reason, feel that, the courts feel that they need to be placed in a jail, it's not for all of your citizens, it's for the protection of them. There again, that kind of gets to splitting hairs on it, but that is one that if y'all so elected to go forward with, I would want to try to send that up, see if we can get a determination.
And then I have some that I put together. These are items also that we've already talked about at our first meeting. The first one is computers to, for my office staff to allow us to work from home in the event COVID happens again. Now, we were very lucky this time, only one person had COVID, and none of the rest of us got sick, but you can all see that in the event of COVID, or whatever the reason, whatever it is that causes people to get sick, we still have to be able to get the payroll done. That's very important to all of our employees. In fact, it's important to our county as a whole from an economic standpoint, as well as getting the bills paid. Now, we might not get much else done, but we've got to keep the lights on and get our employees paid. So, that's $4,300. I do have an estimate from K-Bro, so I have a question about that, Mr. Taylor. K-Bro is our IT consultant. They've been with the county for 30 years, I don't know, a long, long time. So, when we have a need to purchase something like that, we go, we go to them, and then they go out and get the quotes for us and those kinds of things. This is $4,300, so it's not a big item. Could we use them to do that, or we need to go out and look at? We do have, we do have a relationship with them, but it is, it's way under the $50,000 also.
Yeah, we would have to get in the weeds on it. On the surface, I would say, yeah, we can do it. We just need their documentation where they follow the small purchase procedures and be able to put that in the file. And when we talk about small purchase procedures, just kind of the short and the sweet of it, it is a purchase under $50,000 where you don't have to go through the full competitive bidding process, advertise the bids and so forth, and you can, you can pick up the phone and call and say, hey, we got to have this, and you can reach out to several vendors and document the information that you received from those vendors. Now, you cannot take a project and break it up into smaller bites in order to circumvent the overall project, but if you do have items from time to time, such as that $4,300, that would fall within the small purchase parameters.
The other item I had brought to your attention back at our last meeting was air, three air cleaner units for the auditor's office for the same reason, essential workers. If we are able to come to work, we need to make, we have one, but we would need, we would need three more, and that's $4,000. The estimate came from what we paid for the last one, for the last one we bought. This next one is an estimated cost of $37,000. We talked about it during our budget, and we also talked about it during our last meeting with Mr. Taylor. It's cybersecurity improvements. K-Bro has given us an estimate, let me see if I have it here, I don't think I brought it, an estimate of the items that we need related to off-site, off-site storage and backups and those kinds of things, of about $37,000. I've been working with him for a year and a half, really, and Tac's been involved, because I don't know what it is that we need, but I know from listening to Tac that there are some things that most counties need. So, we've all worked together to develop that estimate, so I think, and, you know, we discussed during budget, putting it in the budget, but I think it meets the requirements for this. You'll be the man to make that final determination. But if it meets the requirements for this, this may be where we want to put that, because it is something that we need, and it does benefit the entire county, you know, not, not just one particular.
And to kind of follow up on that, that is one of the items that the final rule specifically references is an eligible expenditure. They realize the dangers and the importance of cybersecurity these days, and so they, they have definitely said that that is an eligible expenditure of ARPA funds.
I didn't know that. Okay, and then I have, I got a phone call from Aaron Gann after our last meeting. He is the TRISA, I guess, president, leader, supervisor, and I sent that information to you. He's requested, he says that they need four generators, and they're about $125,000 a piece. I generally explained to him the purchasing requirements, because he told me he's got a company he goes with, he wants them to all be able to work, you know, all the match-up with each other kind of things, and I explained to him the requirements for purchasing. I think he's a little overwhelmed, as I am, so.
Well, it's definitely out of the ordinary, definitely out of what you're accustomed to. The other thing that I think we talked about briefly last time is, is the other thing that would come into play on that, in all probability, would be an engineer needing to be procured to design those projects and to size those generators specifically for each one of those. Is it booster pumps that he's looking at, or wells, or?
No, I don't.
I imagine it's at their substations is probably what the generator, the generator for the substations to where, if, just like the, when we had the ice storm, they lost power and, you know, couldn't give water out to people and this, that, and the other, so.
And, and once again, as it goes back to engineers, that is a state statute that we have to look at, that far counties, if you are going to be doing a project that involves the design of any type of electrical components, that's projected to be more than $8,000, there has to be a licensed engineer involved in the design of that project and creating the specs of it. And once again, the way that would customarily work, whether that is done by the county or whether it's done by the SUD, the steps all have to be followed, it all has to be gone through, you're not going to bypass any of them. The engineer, once again, you'd go out and advertise, procure an engineering firm, then the engineer would go out and design that project, start to finish, as far as the foundation for the generator, the size generator. We encourage automatic transfer switch any place we can, whether it's a manual switch or an automatic switch, and then the tying in of all those components, and then that would go out for bid. The engineer would be the one that would be heading up that actual bidding process. And there again, you'd have to go through the bidding process on that. It would have to be published and gone out for bid for those generators.
And then Mr. Fitch has turned some in. John, these aren't in any order.
No.
You brought me a couple yesterday, but I had some that you'd brought earlier.
Yeah.
So, do you want to talk about them?
Yeah, I can talk about them. I was wanting to get for, we talked about maybe dividing $250,000 up per precinct for equipment or materials. So, one of them is a backhoe, and I'll need to add a few guidelines on there. I want a four-way bucket, I want it to be 95 to 110 horsepower, extended in the back, extend the hoe out the back, padded feet, air-conditioned cab, so. That's one of them. The other one's a dump truck comparable to a 750, a Ford 750, 26,000 pound gross vehicle weight, GBWR, whatever. I'm really not, not interested if I get air brakes or that 31,000 pound range one. I'd rather have the 26,000, so anybody can drive it with just a regular driver's license. And then, a new trailer with a 12-foot ramp on the back, safe, kind of like the other ones we had bought before. And then, also, I measured, this is countywide, I went and measured the parking lot for the county extension office to have it chip sealed. I figured that'd be a lot cheaper than paving it, and we can do it probably for 7,000 or less, so the bid ended up being about, we put 8,000 just to kind of round things off and put 500 in there for miscellaneous, and we would do that ourselves. So, the bid was just for the, the oil and the pea gravel. And with the base that's there, if we packed it really good, and overlay spray, spray a seal coat on it first and let it dry, and then chip seal it. And then, also turned in something else.
Crane truck.
Oh, a crane truck for the maintenance barn. So, 550 or comparable, we're not really concerned, I talked to them about, they didn't mind if it's gas or diesel, most of them are diesel though, a used one, which the range runs from 60,000 to, some of them are 100,000. And a 5,000 pound capacity crane to, 5 to 10,000 pound crane, depending on what they come with, so. I turned that in at $80,000 and told them my references was that, was on Truck Trader, so that'd be an easy one to find. And that's it that I know of.
I have a question about that one. Is that the same truck that we talked about during budget as possibly putting in the maintenance barn budget?
Yeah. Did we put it in the budget? We didn't?
I mean, we know right now.
I thought we dropped it. Yeah, so that's what we were talking about.
Okay, but this, I'm thinking that a crane truck would meet the requirements for ARPA funds.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then, then I'm not going to put that in the budget, I'm going to leave it here.
I wouldn't. I'd do the, do the ARPA.
I just want to, and obviously with Judge Lee about that too, but I just want to, you know, we don't want to duplicate that.
Do you think it had to be a new or a used one? Does it have to be a new truck or it had to be a used?
It's not specified, they don't specify.
We might want to change it and get a new one, probably twice that, it'd be probably 150. Crane, this crane alone is 50,000 at least, so the used ones look pretty good to me, and automatic transmission, put that in, four-wheel drive, so that's all I had on that so far.
Once again, when funds are put into the lost revenue and it comes down to the commissioner level as far as an eligible activity, for the most part, once again, we talked about a few exceptions earlier, but if it's something you would customarily be spending your budget on, then it's an eligible activity. You just got a lot more hoops and loops you got to go through with it.
We had got what we call our pool of equipment, Mark, that all of us share.
Yes, sir.
And we've got several different pieces of equipment, but we're needing some more that, you know, so would that classify too, I mean, is that, okay?
Yeah.
I'm going to put that in some of mine. I've got, I've got three or four ideas here that, I was kind of waiting till after this meeting before I'd done mine, because I had, you know, had some questions on there that I kind of wanted to answer, but I'm going to try to get them set up here about the first of the week, next week.
And, and once again, kind of the way we see this playing out is, is once we get these sheets, we'll go in, we'll look at the project, determine if we need any more information in order to try to make a decision on it, determine the eligibility, what code it would fall under, then we would bring those items back to Commissioner's Court, and we would say, these first three are not eligible, and these, this is why these are not eligible activities. The rest of these are eligible activities, and then the Commissioner's Court would make a determine if you wanted to proceed with any, all, whichever ones of those recommended activities. Any else have any questions?
I have, I have one more thing.
Okay.
I keep having one more thing, I'm sorry. When we, when we talk about, we'll just use TRISA. I understand what you're saying about we have to procure an engineer, and then the engineer would write the specs and procure the purchase of the generators, but you mentioned that the county could do it, or TRISA could do that. I do not have the time or the expertise to do that, so that's why we have Mr. Taylor. Would you then work with TRISA and, and help them meet those, and is that covered in what we're, what our contract is with you or with any separate contract? How does that work?
Okay, so, so let's say, first of all, let's say we keep it at the county level. If it was at the county level, then we would coordinate with you, and based on what you wanted us to do, first thing we'd have to have is an engineer procured, and we can say, we can draft the documents, we can provide them to you, or we can take it and run with it, and you can review it before we send it to the paper, or if you give us an okay, we'll go ahead and send it to the paper, however you want to do it. Then, once those proposals were received from the engineers, we would review those, make sure they met all the criteria that was specified in the RFQ, then we would bring it back to you, in turn, it would be brought to Commissioner's Court and say, this would be the recommendation of the engineer procured for this project. At that point in time, we would work with that engineer to go forward with the SUD and get out there and determine what's needed at that point. He would take the ball and run with it as far as the ads and the whole nine yards on procuring the turnkey project.
But would you follow up and make sure he did those things?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, yeah, I'd work, and I would be working with that engineer either way.
Okay, okay.
If it goes down to the next level, once again, the county's still obligated for it, you're still responsible for it, you still have that liability, you just have a little more control over it if it's, if it's at the county level rather than going down. But however far it goes down, we'll still coordinate, work with it, make sure they're doing the procurement properly. It's just like you said, Aaron, I think you said, you talked to him a little bit, it kind of.
He was very surprised.
Yeah, and it's, and I, don't misunderstand me, I know your plate's full and that's, but, but the farther down you get, the harder it is to understand all the red tape that's involved in there, and all the process you have to go through. But no, we're here to assist the county, we're here to work with the county, do whatever you want us to on these things at whatever level.
So, what's our, our next step is then to, to collect, Mr. Parker's got some forms, I don't know, the rest of y'all may have some forms, some requests, and send those to you.
Send those to me, and once again, we'll, we'll start reviewing them, and then we'll, we'll set a workshop to come back to the county and present what we've determined based off those forms to you. There again, we'll, we'll kind of present you a draft budget that we'll work through and say, here's, here's what you got to work with, now start telling us what, at, once again, at the 30,000-foot level, what you want to put out there for consideration. You know, if it's, if it's the backhoe, or if it's to give each commissioner $250,000, then they would put that on there and would say, okay, here's what you got left to work with, where you want to go from here. And it could be that one of these that are presented, or several of these that are presented, the commissioners as a whole agree that we don't want to go forward with this request. And that's, that's perfectly fine, that's, that's the process, and that's, that's why we're bringing it to you. We've got more important things to go forward with. In our opinion, with this money, this is a one-shot deal, and this is what we want to do with this money. We don't want to go over here with it, we want to go over here.
And we have to have all the funds, I think it's encumbered by December of '24. And we have to have all the funds, I think it's encumbered by December of '24 and paid out by December of '26?
Yes, ma'am.
So that seems like a long way away, but y'all can hear with all these strings attached and how everything is going to take, well, like, like TRISA, if y'all decide to do that, we get the engineer, then we do another procurement process and specifications and all that, it's going to.
And then you go out for bid on the.
Right.
On the project. And then, I don't know if y'all that familiar with generators currently, but it's not uncommon to see an 18-month backlog on some of these larger generators.
Yep. That's everything we've been looking at.
That's pretty much everything.
Yep, it is. And that, that has to be taken into consideration on this. And, and once again, this is not an all or done deal. It could be we get this information, we come back to you, you've got a little over $6 million. It could be that in that meeting you decide, all right, we want to move forward with 1.3, 3.4 million, whatever, and then we want to back up and take another look at what's left. You know, it, it just gets that much farther down the road and the best I can define it is it's kind of like a funnel. You know, we start out wide open and we're going to start narrowing things down as we move forward. We are here to guide y'all. Once again, we're here to keep you between the ditches, we're not here to dictate to you. We're here to explain the rules and regs the best we understand them. You look at federal regulation two, Part 200, yet, yet, and of itself can be mind-boggling. Since January 1, they have changed two, Part 200, three times.
Why does that not surprise us?
So we, we try to keep up with it as best we can, we try to keep it as current as possible, we look at those revisions and we determine, does it have an effect on your procurement procedures? Do we need to come back and amend them? Or is it something we just need to be aware of as we move forward with, with these procedures?
Do you have anything else, Mark? I guess the judge has still been tied up, I guess he can go back and watch our, watch the video and.
Of y'all video?
Yes, sir.
Did I say anything I've placed?
But before we quit here, we've got these folks with the City of Talco, and they've got a request. Michael, who, who's going to be y'all's spokesman?
I'm, I'm.
You are?
I'm Mr. Lee.
If you would, come up here to the podium and tell us exactly what y'all are requesting
I'll introduce myself, I guess, I'm Michael Morris and City Council of Talco. And we were, I guess, informed that, that some of this might be available to us for street repair in our, in our municipality within our city limits. And we have, we have some streets that are in, need to, it's beyond our capability with the equipment, material that we have as far as repair. Some need, some need seal code and some need, some sections that need a, more of a rehab before, before they get a seal code. And so we were just going to come and ask if we could be, you know, if we could be involved in the communications at least. That sum it up, Mr. Mayor?
You, you kind of see what we're up against too with.
Yes.
With what, you know, Mr. Taylor has, has told us and all today. And, but we, you know, we can definitely keep, did y'all as a city municipality not receive any of the ARPA fund?
We, I don't believe that we actually received any of the, received any of the, the funds. I think we had, did that right?
Is there any way y'all could possibly get an estimated cost on what we'd be looking at, possibly to see what roads y'all are interested in fixing?
We can look at it for sure.
I talked to them the other day and it was 14 miles. And if you figure just chip sealing, that's $231,000 right there. So we had to put in a bid for about 250 because there are going to be some other costs involved in that. And we might want to pre-spray some stuff, that's not repairing it with, that's not doing any soft spot repair with cold mixes after you fill it in with white rock or something and then coming back over. So it's going to be, you know, a basic 250,000 or something like that, and then just fill out the paperwork and we'll shoot it on up to them and then see what, where that goes from there.
Have they talked to you Bennett, Barbara, about filling it out?
Filling it out? I don't know what the heck to work.
This bid on these sheets?
Oh, has anybody talked to me?
No, who do they, who they, do they talk to you, get, were you on this to fill this out or what?
I mean, any of y'all can do that.
Oh, we do, he can't do it for us and turn it in?
You can ask him to do it, sure.
Yeah, I, we can just fill it out. I mean, I just basically figured it right there. And we might put in some soft spot repair monies in there. And we'll put it in there and then go with it and go through our priorities.
I have one question.
I figured with culverts and everything.
What's a small, small city?
Yeah. If they just, if they can get them halfway ready, we'll do the rest.
I'm not familiar with a lot of them, but my knowledge, every incorporated city in the state will offer ARPA funds. Now they did not accept it, you don't, you don't have to accept it. But my knowledge, it should have been offered to every municipality.
But John, you need to.
Yes, there's probably that care back. Ask, just now, there's a rule, ARPA, for the bus parks, about three thousand, so the care back, bus park, the alley.
I talked to Randy Carroll and he said they did get some ARPA funds. He told me the figure, but it's been about six months ago. So it was like 150,000 or it was 30,000 or something, it wasn't very much. But, so we need to research that, see. And then we wanted to know if, do y'all want to replace your culverts and make sure your soft spots are ready and we're just going to chip seal? Or do you want us to figure some of that, you know, so?
That's something that we can, we can look at.
Yeah, I don't know how much y'all get, how much y'all do on your own, I mean, it'd be talk to Randy, see what he says. Okay. We can do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Brian, we have gone over everything kind of and, and these folks from Talco and requesting some for.
I was listening to everything on the video.
That's, that's what I told them, we can go ahead and go through that, you can go back and listen to the video, listen to everything that we talked about.
And just have to box that sure that.
City of Talco Street was prepared and whatnot. The board went over, kind of, what some of our requests that she had from you and, and I've got some that I'm going to turn in, I'll wait till after this meeting before I've done mine. I think, John, it turns up. But that, that's where we're at. Mark kind of went over everything and, you know, so.
Couple of reminders for discussing all these items that you can do. Both, and then more, and then less. Two of the big items we had talked about, conversion of that jail basement and then broadband. And I know some other smaller projects that, that I have. These were not necessarily my personal requests on these. The two that I put in for conversion of the jail basement or the broadband expansion. Are there any new large projects that you all discussed lately that are potentially Mark, did you hear anything that, that you thought I could question a little bit, that of what you heard?
No, not the information that's been discussed. Once again, some of it I do want the office to know, have a resurgence, but this one I'm not questioning.
What, what about the jail expansion?
Let me back up a little bit, that's the one that I do possibly question a little bit. And I told the commissioners that is one. If y'all elect to go forward with that, I would recommend that we try to reach out to Treasury and get their blessing on it.
Absolutely.
Before, because they, they have not specifically stated that jails or prisons or retention facilities are not eligible, but they did state something to the fact, and I don't remember the exact wording, but in most instances they are discouraged.
And, and that, that's what I feared. I've heard another county that's planning on doing that, but I, this, this is, this has nothing to do with COVID. And probably a lot of the money is going to be spent on things that have nothing to do with COVID, so where do you draw the line?
That's claimed as lost revenue, of course, does not have to have any ties to COVID. And so, yeah, without a doubt, and once again, y'all's, y'all's entire allocation has been claimed as lost revenue. And so it, it does not have to have a COVID tie to it. But, but those are specific things as far as use of the funds overall that they, that they do kind of discourage. And so like I say, if it's y'all's pleasure to move forward, I would recommend we try to reach out and, and get them to bless it before we do something.
Is that still a project that y'all are interested in or have you cooled off to that? We really haven't talked anymore about that since that concept was brought up during budget. Is there anybody, any of you that still feels like that's a, something we should do with ARPA funds?
Except the hospital?
No, the, the jail. Oh, I don't think it is for the jail. I mean, it's a $5 million investment that, so we can get prisoners and then we put all the other bills to do it. We could have took that and put in that waste station and not lift a finger and brought in income, you know, so I don't think so. I, I wouldn't. It's just something that we can use it, if we do it, we're going to have to keep it full all the time, so it's not a necessity.
Turnaround is going to be good on it. What'd you say the turnaround was on it to pay that back, Mark? You had it figured at one time, but now you remember it now.
It was, it was, was it 15 years, 20 years, a long time?
Yeah, it's a long term.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and even if that, it would take a long time to get that money back, but when you, when you add more prisoners, then you're going to have to have more staff and food costs and all those kinds of things.
Now, now when you say get that money back, could you?
Yes, we house Allen County prisoners, some of those counties pay us, and we actually made money off of that.
Okay.
So the sheriff's intention was that he could pay that, he could, if we could spend money upfront and do this work, then he could pay it back in three or four or five. He didn't have many years. But when we actually calculated it, it was much longer term because you have all those other costs involved. And sure, you get the building, but then you've got to have, you know, more jailers and more, all, everything, and all staff and costs related to, you know, electricity and everything.
Right, okay.
That was discussed during the budget, non-very one of these meetings, just why you're not, just why you don't remember.
Okay, and the reason I ask on that, there's, there's kind of another one of those deals out there in the federal regs that refers to program income. If you take federal dollars and you put it into an activity that turns around and generates income for you, that has to be reported to the federal government. And in this situation, it'd be kind of a gray area, already having the jail and all of that, and what percentage of it would potentially be considered program income and that type thing. But with program income, once again, federal dollars come down for expenditure for the benefit of the citizens. Federal government says we, we don't necessarily want it put down there for you to use it in a, in a situation to create income for yourself. And as a rule, what they look at, and I'm not sure on the exact dollar, a few years ago it was $35,000 a year. If you generate program income, and that would be net income over expenses above $35,000 a year, all revenue has to go back to the federal government. And there are guidelines.
I have forgotten.
That references that. We ran into a situation several years ago, we had helped a city construct a senior citizens' center. And, well, I take that back. We didn't assist them with it, it'd been done several years prior. They hired us to come in and assist them with the administration of their community development block grant funds. They were an entitlement entity. And about a year and a half into it, they mentioned the senior citizens' center and the, and the rent on it. And I'm like, rent? And they're like, yeah, it really didn't work out that well for senior citizens' center, so we rented it out for, you know, birthday parties, activities, weddings, whatever. And they had been getting a pretty sizable revenue off that facility and not reporting it to the federal government. And that was looked at as program income above the expenses to maintain that facility. And so that's something, that's, and I'm not saying it definitely would come into play, but that's something we would need to dig down and, and look at in a situation like that.
I think that's a clear answer to me. That's a clear answer. If we're interested in doing this, let's borrow some good long-term fixed money and do it. That's the gray areas I can come up with and that's, that's just buying future income streams. It's not like we have the need and time in county to expand that facility. It's, hey, we can be a, you know, a profit center for housing out of county prisoners. So I, I'd say we take that off of the table. I don't say that you take the expansion off the table, but we could still borrow some fairly cheap, long-term money if we wanted to do that. Keeping in mind that you're also banking on that continuing to be a source of income. But as far as ARPA, let's, let's scrap that one. I don't want to strap y'all with something that might come back to haunt you, and if we've got to, you know, read between the lines in order to justify that, it's not a good project. What were, what were other large ticket items that you have discussed other than broadband or maybe you didn't even discuss broadband?
John, John had mentioned it, he is, about 250,000 for each one of the commissioners for run materials and whatnot. And I had, I had been thinking about that myself, on that. I'm looking right now at, at possibly turning something in for a truck, a pull truck for the, for the pool and a tanker trailer. And possibly a bucket truck.
And that wouldn't go towards your precinct money, that would go towards the county in general.
That would be.
Above, because shared.
That would be.
Those are three real wanted items.
It wouldn't, wouldn't go.
Are they needed?
To.
Need to then wanted. I mean, yeah, yeah, what we budgeted for that pull truck is not near enough, it's almost twice that now. So since we've already put it in the budget, you know, one year we decided we're going to do it for 70 or something, we hadn't ever done it, it's not going to touch it. I mean, it's, we can't find them anyway, so we're going to have to rebid that a little higher, this would be good for that.
It's, it's a one-time thing that, that it wouldn't, wouldn't hit our budget, but it, it would help all of us.
It's a 25-year benefit, is that fair? Uh, for sure, yeah, that would be. A bucket truck may be a good 10 or 15 if you get a good one. Hey, our bucket truck now is 40 years old, so we could get a good used one on that.
Yes.
I doubt it on the pull truck, we've been looking, you know? It has to be a cream pump.
I've just gone out to, and gotten some prices on one and from what it's looking like, one guy said that, that, he said, I can't even, couldn't even price you a truck now for, for 23. He said it'd be 24 before I could even get you. We, it's going to be somewhere around 130,000.
Same way for that old tanker, that tanker trailer.
The tanker trailer is probably, and I haven't called for sure on the F yet, but probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, of. somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 or 70,000, amazing on that tanker trailer.
We got a bid on that, I got a bid on that pull truck, about $153,000, $154,000.
That's automatic. That's what we planned on.
That's what the wet tank, everything else.
Mark, what about your discussion with Terry Skoggin at the hospital on their request?
We very basically discussed eligible and ineligible type activities, and he said as soon as he had an opportunity, he would start gathering up some things and provide to me, and we'd go over that list and kind of take a look at.
Did he understand those parameters that you were referring to? And he felt like he could certainly justify that?
Yeah, he said he didn't think that would present an issue at all.
I don't think it will either. I think he's got expenses well beyond that, but I believe he could easily justify that. And the contribution to our short-line railroad infrastructure repairs?
That was just mentioned on the surface there again. Once again, we've kind of talked about tracking these funds. It would be an eligible expenditure, but we would need to follow those expenditures with the railroad and determine what they propose to expend those dollars on.
And I think that that would be easy if we knew that that money was coming in. I know that the board could come up with a project. $50,000 will go in two afternoons.
Right.
And my hopes are that the other five counties, one of which has already made a contribution, would do the same thing, give or take $50,000, and coming up with a $300,000 project would be easily trackable.
Yeah.
Okay, were there any other large expenditures other than the, say, $1 million going in road materials? What about broadband discussion? Any further discussion on that?
I don't know. This is, for broadband now, since I've been to meetings with TAC and everything since we started talking broadband with the Texas Broadband Office, some of the monies they have and some of the grants and some of the companies that are getting grants to come in and bring in broadband, we need to talk to Nathan to pull you on a couple of other ways to do that broadband instead of using ARPA on it. And we were advised at our trainings not to use it on broadband because there are so much other money out there floating around. So, you can save this awkward money for something else needed. The broadband's coming. There's programs out there we need to.
Well, we've got, we're talking about $6 million. Where's it going to be spent then, if you're not looking at any of these big-ticket items?
Precinct third.
That's where we all want to move to. Turbin Gutter.
Judge Lee, I have a couple of things.
Please.
Mr. Taylor went over procurement, and with regard, the example that we talked about was the railroad and with Tracer, if we decide to fund them, then we have to, they have to procure things the same way that we would have to. And that's, you know, there's a lot of strings attached, and he discussed some of those, and I know you're generally familiar with that. And I had told Aaron, that Aaron Dan about that. So, he discussed that kind of, not really at length, but in a little more detail. So, we can't just, the best example I can give you, we can't say, okay, here's $50,000 for the railroad, and here's this much for Tracer. There's going to be a lot.
That doesn't wash your hands of the bookkeeping. Did Aaron say anything about he thought he was going to be getting some money from the city?
He didn't, no, no. But I talked to him, indeed, I haven't talked to him since then. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is, I think Mr. Fitch has on one of his forms, the crane truck that we discussed during budget to put in the budget.
Yeah.
But I think we decided today, with your approval, of course, that we'd like to put that through ARPA instead of including that in the county budget.
That would be another one, well, it would be, but it wouldn't be a full piece of equipment. I mean, we could go get it if we needed, you know, to do something, but it would mainly be for the maintenance department. But that would be something that I think would be good. You know, there are several things there that I already named off, and that one, the crane truck there, that I think would, it'd go mad on the level of the time you had them all together. But I think that's something, it's a one-time expenditure with a 20, 25-year life on most of it. So, I think it's something that we need to look at.
Well, I haven't heard $2 million worth of expenditures yet. And I've heard $1 million for road materials and a few hundred thousand dollars for miscellaneous pieces of equipment, a couple hundred thousand for the hospital, and $50,000 maybe for the railroad. What else are we going to do with this?
I'll take a million, you're going to give a million.
Well, I hope we could.
When we first started talking about this, then this was another thing that I was waiting till after the day. I was, I had thought about $500,000 for each road, the precincts, to try to, for everybody, give everybody, try to get the roads back up to work.
For road material?
What about offset some of the rates?
Maybe dues to F and I Development Corporation for two years, means a two-year contract, maybe a year contract. I mean, we have to negotiate after two years, but what else is going on? I mean, we need to participate in something so we can use some money out of this for that.
That's going to have the same requirements as the $50,000 to the railroad. They're going to have to tell us what they're doing and.
What's it for?
What's it for, and then we can figure that.
I don't think it'd be a problem for them, really. I don't think Nathan's seen the terms that have to account.
Right.
You know, at that level. And, you know, Nathan hasn't even talked to me, much less to y'all, about this 300,000 I asked. I think that that's something that perhaps you'll be favorably inclined to listen to him and to participate in that effort. But I think we're a long way from making that a decision today.
I want to jump in here. We have these funds, and I know that y'all are working diligently to use them as best you can. I want to caution you against giving money to an entity and not knowing exactly what we're going to get back. Let me give you an example. With the appraisal district, we pay them, this next year, the amount's going to be $184,000, and they give us a 35-page report every time. And it's been through their whole process. The state requires them to go through a certain process. They give us a line item budget. They give us the amounts that people are paid. They tell us about their debt. They, I mean, it's a long, I don't know if you've all seen that, but it's a long report. So, I want to encourage you that if we decide to do that, and certainly I don't vote, that's your decision, but I just want to make sure that we, if we're going to get that kind of information for $185,000 for a $300,000 project, or a million-dollar project, or whatever it is we decide to do, we need to have similar information, just transparency for our taxpayers to prove that we are indeed making the best use of our funds. So, you didn't ask for that, but I'm just, I want to make sure that we've got that there.
And I would think any entity would know that that's a small price to pay to be getting a significant chunk of money, but I'm sure it would be good to put that burden on them rather than on us, although we're ultimately responsible. And that's a good point. Let's go over one more time the timeframe here, lest we keep pushing these decisions out. We've got to have the monies, go over those schedules one more time, Mark, as to when the projects have got to be identified and when the last dollar's got to be spent.
Funds need to be obligated by the end of December 2024. Need to be fully expended by the end of December 2026.
That means within the next two years and five months, you need to know exactly what your project is and what it's going to be used for. And then you've got two years after that to actually write those checks. You can't embark on a five-year project that's substantially incomplete after the end of 2026. Were we getting our air conditioners looked at by Woods to say, these units need to be replaced, or did I just dream that up?
I asked Trey to do that.
Okay, so when he tells us, maybe we can add up, we need $200,000 worth of air conditioners, and we can change them out with ARPA money to be on top of that.
I visited with him about that because our costs had gone up so much, and he's supposed to have something to me by around October 1st, just because he's, that's, Trey is the man at Wood Air Conditioning who does our semi-annual maintenance on all of our units, and our costs have gone significantly in the last few years. They're all 11 or 12 years up for the most part.
Well, it's because the costs have gone up because we're replacing a lot of these units that we put in fifteen years ago.
So, I just asked him, because his people see those, to give me an estimate of just what do they look like.
There again, going back to the discussion we had on conflict of interest, kind of get that a very generic estimate.
Yes.
And that is something that, once you have determined what you're going to need and the specs and so forth, you have to go through the.
Right, yes, yes.
Well, that's a start. I know there's going to be needs arise and other ideas, since we just started, you know, thinking about this in the last month or so, so.
Judge, commissioners, y'all had mentioned broadband a couple of times. That's a subject everywhere we go. I don't know what your time's like today, but I do kind of have some generic information as it pertains to Titus County, if y'all'd like for me to present that, not to encourage, discourage, either way.
I think that'd be good, Mark. I still think that that's something that could make a powerful impact on this community, whether you could do all that you wanted to do, you know, you're not going to be able to, you can certainly attack certain areas.
In one time, we talked about discussing a new retail neighbor. Would that, might be a good time to do that as well?
Thank you.
The information you're looking at here, there are four pages that are paperclipped together, and then there's an additional page behind those. The four pages, these are maps. The information on here is compiled by the FCC, and it is what they are saying is the broadband service currently in Titus County. Now, the first thing I can tell you is, this information is not 100% accurate. How accurate it is, I cannot tell you that. And you'd mentioned the Texas Broadband Office, and talking to them, we discussed our concerns with it and the fact that this is the best information we have access to, but we have a lot of people telling us that they, you know, I live in this area, I know there's not service in that area. And basically, what the Texas Broadband Office said is, well, they go out to a point, they do a speed test on it, and then they draw a circle around that of whatever radius and said, okay, this is the broadband coverage of this area. And then they go to another area. So, it could be a small part of that area. It does have broadband to meet this, but not that entire area. As you look at the numbers across the top, and that is the speed, both down and uploading speed, so the first one that's in those four pages, that would be 10 megs down and one mega up. All of the area, with the exception of what is in white, the FCC has a speed of at least 10 megs down and one mega up. I would say there are probably other areas within the county that does not have any broadband service that is not recognized on this. The following pages are 25, 50, and 100 meg down, and then you can see the associated megs up behind that. When you get to the meg, to the 100 meg down, that's what the Texas Broadband Office is looking at. That's what everybody's going to be going to in the next few years. They're saying that everybody should have access to 100 megs down, preferably 100 megs up, but minimum 10 megs up. The fifth page that attached, that I paperclipped to that, it's titled "The Titus County ARDOF Awards." That is the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. That is a federal fund, and they kind of reverse-engineer that as far as going out for bids. They auctioned block groups off that, once again, the FCC feels does not have the speed that they should have. The areas that are colored on here are areas that the federal government has auctioned off. There's a third-party provider that said, we're going to either come in, we're going to provide broadband to that area, or we're going to improve the broadband speed to that area. And in return for that, the federal government is going to be compensating them for every rooftop that they either improve the speed to or attach broadband service to. Once again, one of the issues with that, we don't know the dates on that. But that gives you a general idea of kind of, once again, it's not 100% accurate, but gives you some idea of what the coverage is in Titus County, what you know can be coming through the ARDOF funds. As Commissioner Fitch mentioned, there are additional funds coming through the Texas Broadband Office. There is going to be a little over half a billion dollars that's going to be put out there within the next couple of months.
Statewide?
Statewide, yes, sir. Now, that is for what they refer to as final mile. And if you're not familiar with that, that's a situation where you already have the basic broadband structure to an area, but it does not reach out to the individual houses. That would be to provide additional lines to go to those additional houses. And if you will, basically, it would be like as having a state highway going through there. That's your main mile or your middle mile, and then the county roads would be your end mile. That's what gets you to the individual homes. So, this half a billion dollars, a little bit over, they're projecting that they will start taking applications in October. They've got a lot to do between now and then. But they will be able to take applications from individual providers that says, hey, we can provide service in this area, we want to submit an application to you for X amount of dollars. Broadband, it's one of those deals. It's coming, you've got to have it, everybody has to have it. I think that's something that's really been brought out through COVID and the folks that are working from home, the kids that are now doing schoolwork from home. We have a kid that's working for his part-time, he's finishing his college over the internet, which is not unheard of at all now. And so, it is something that's, it can be quite expensive. Not to be discouraging at all, but you can take $6 million bucks, that's not going to get you a long ways. It'll help, without a doubt. One county we're looking at, they are looking, are considered putting in some underground fiber cable. The estimated cost currently is around $60 a foot to put fiber cable in. And what's the mile? 5,280 feet? So, that can add up pretty quick on that. There are other options out there. I live in a rural area. I had satellite service for a while, which was awful. I now have some type of a microwave dish mounted on my antenna, and it makes all the difference in the world. I access a tower that's seven or eight miles off somewhere. But that's what a lot of places are looking at in the rural areas, to get the broadband out there. Once again, I'm not trying to encourage, discourage y'all one way or the other on it. I think broadband is very important. I just wanted you to have a rough idea of what you do have out there now, what's coming up. Now, the little over a billion dollars that the Texas Broadband Office is going to be putting out there, those of you that are not familiar with that office, it hadn't been out there that long. It came into existence September of last year. It came into existence because the state of Texas got ARPA funds that was designated for broadband service, and they needed some way to get it out there. So, that half a billion dollars, that's ARPA funds. They've got the same timeframes on those funds that y'all have on your funds. So, it is very important to them that they start processing applications. And we had a visit with them just within the past week, and the lady I talked with, she's like, Mark, we're not sure how we're going to do it. We just know that we're mandated, and she's like, we got to do it. The money's there, it's got to be spent. We got to make it available, and we're projecting it will be available in October to these providers. She said beyond that, in 2024, they're expecting to get between. they're expecting to get between two, another 2 and 3 billion dollars through other federal
24?
Yes, sir. In '24.
That sounds promising. Is that causing some of counties to rethink how much they want to contribute towards broadband with their ARPA money?
Well, it's, it's one of those situations, Judge, that there's never enough money to go around. And it, and it does make some of them stop to think about it. And, and once again, I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other on it. It's just that most of the people we talk to, it's like, we know it's important, but we honestly don't know what we have in our county. We know we have people that tell us they don't have any service. We have other people that tell us they have good service. And if you've talked to these providers, they keep cards hidden pretty well. They, they don't want the, the general public to know what kind of coverage they provide. For one, if they're not providing the coverage it needs to be, they don't want somebody else coming in there and taking over what they're claiming is, as their turf in some situations. Once again, the, the ARDOF funds, I really can't tell you a lot about it. You're welcome to Google it. We pulled these maps off of their website. They do have a timeframe to utilize those ARDOF funds. Those funds, once again, are, were awarded, or they were bid on and contracted out by block group. And once again, that's the federal government. Those are federal dollars. The Fed said, these are the block groups in Titus County that we have up for bids. And it was, once again, it's kind of a, of a reverse auction. If you go to their website and look at their definition, you know, usually you go to auction and everybody's bidding higher and higher. What they're looking at is, is the person that came in and with the lowest dollar and said they would take a lot, a block group for that particular fund is the ones that they awarded those contracts to.
Have they already been awarded, all of them?
Yes, sir. They have been awarded at this one time. And I want to say, and I don't know in Titus County how many awards that was. I know overall, I want to say they had like four different awarding processes for different geographic areas. And some counties were divided up into two or three different awards. You can go on there or we can go on there and look for you if you could like, if you would like. We can find out who those areas were awarded to and get you some contact information for that as well, as far as when they proposed to get in that area and what they're proposing to do.
Would you do that, please?
Sure.
I had a guy call me about, probably a month and a half ago, and was talking to me about if they were going to lay some underground fiber optics and some of it was going to be, or a lot of it's going to be above ground. And part of it was going to be in my precinct out here. And he called and asked me if, about, you know, if, if they could do it. And I told him, I said, if you've got a map of where you're going to do this. And he said, yes, I do. And I said, email it to me. And it's, there's several areas out there in, in my precinct that, that they're supposed to be doing. And I told him, I said, what I see, I don't, I don't see a problem with it. I said, if it'll help, help my folks out out here, yeah. I told Dana just now, a little bitty square there over the woods east side of the county, I think's where I, where my house is.
What is above, what is above ground broadband? What is above ground? Maybe the tower?
It's fiber optics.
Above ground?
They've already made contact with the Buick cast to, to run down their poles like suddenly it's done in part of the area out there.
As far as pole placement, and I don't know about the electrical service throughout the county, but I want to say it was 2019, Texas Legislature mandated that any co-op must make pole space available for broadband lines if anybody wants, wants to tie into that and utilize those lines. Of course, they could charge for it. They can charge a fee for the, the initial installation of the line on the pole, then they can charge an, an annual fee. But, but they cannot deny access to broadband service if a provider's want to come through with broadband service.
This, this was the engineering department that, that called me and was asking about if they were getting everything together for. And I don't even know who the, I think the spectrum may be or somebody that doesn't do it anymore.
Yeah. In addition, I think it's House Bill 1505, if I'm not mistaken, that was passed a while back. That provides funds for pole replacement for co-ops. If they have any poles that need to be replaced in conjunction with the installation of, of broadband lines being a pack, attached. Then, once again, these are federal dollars that are coming down. They're made available. They'll pay for half of that pole replacement up to a maximum cost per pole of $10,000. And that's reimbursement to the co-ops for any poles that need to be replaced. So, so there's a lot happening out there with broadband. And once again, it's, it is very important. It's very vital. Everybody, just about everybody uses it now for, for some reason. And it's not uncommon for a household to have five, if you stop and count, five, six, seven devices that are, that are fed off of broadband. And I'm not an IT guy. I don't understand all of that. I was talking to, talking to our IT guy and I'm like, well, you know, now that we got this new microwave dish or whatever, we can stream TV, which we'd never done before. And he's like, yeah, you can do that. And I said, well, that's the only thing we have. And he's like, well, you got your cell phone. It automatically picks it up unless you told that you don't want it to. And he said, you said something about somebody had given you a Ring doorbell for Christmas. That's tied into your wifi. Well, okay, maybe I need a lot more than I even realized I did. Anyway, hope that information helps you out a little bit.
Yeah, I'm glad to know that there's that much money in the pipeline. I was kind of thinking we were hanging out on our own.
Once again, the, the money that's coming through Texas Broadband initially, the half a billion, that is for end mile. And once again, part of the justification for that is it's ARPA money and they said, we got to get it spent. We can't, we can't go through design and installing the middle mile lines. We got to have a situation where that's there and we have a provider that says, yeah, I want these funds to provide end mile service to these homeowners. She said, we need to get these contracts out. We need to get the money spent. It's got to be gone by the end of 2026.
And that money's being given to who? The state?
Yes, that, that, those funds went directly to the state. They are ARPA funds, but they went directly to the state designated for broadband service. And that's, that's the reason they created the broadband office. It was created specifically because of, of that allocation of broadband funds.
What's our next steps here after today, Mark?
The information y'all have and the requests that y'all have, and I think there's going to be some more requests submitted. We would like those to be provided to us once you get it. We'll take a look at those, see if we need any additional information. We'll determine. The main thing we're looking at is, is it an eligible activity? Is it not an eligible activity? Once we've made those determinations, then we would like to come back to y'all, present that information back to y'all. And basically, if we do it on a, on a big tablet and easel or whatever, it's like, you know, here's the 6 million plus you started off with. Let's go through the list. Let's take a first run. Tell us what you'd like to put on that potential side for allocating these money to. If there's anything in here, you, you agree that you don't want to allocate these monies to, then, then we'll put those off to the side and we'll move forward and start determining how we're going to move forward with the expenditure of some of these funds. Once again, as we discussed earlier, it does not have to be all of the funds at once. We just need to kind of get, start getting down the road with it with things that y'all, y'all feel strongly about, that you know you want to expend the funds on. And what do we need to do as far as moving forward with procurement and so forth to get, to get those dollars utilized?
What kind of timeframe do you want us to comply with?
Y'all kind of give me some feedback on that. Two weeks long enough? Are y'all comfortable with that timeframe to get all of those documents to us? Y'all want to just say that we need them by the 1st of August?
And these additional new ones are going to be the road materials and the equipment that you talked about? Is there anything else? Are we going to take, do you want to take the broadband off the table for now? Take the jail off the table for now? But you feel comfortable with any of these road improvement related expenses?
I'm sorry, sir, what?
You feel comfortable with any of these road related, road material, road improvement related expenses?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
And, and the, and the equipment to haul the materials and stuff like that?
Once again, once, once this money has been basically put in the lost revenue pot, anything that, not necessarily Titus County, but A County would customarily expend their funds on or eligible expenses with a few exceptions in there. Rainy day fund and things on those, those three or four items that we had discussed previously.
And they don't look at what historically you've spent each year and see a spike there?
No. And once again, they don't look at what Titus County has spent the money on. They look at what A County would customarily spend money on.
Okay.
So even if it's something you've never spent money on before, that is a service to your citizens, that is something that would not be out of the ordinary for a county to spend money on, then you can take a look at that.
Judge Lee, I have one more thing that's been mentioned to me. I don't know if this meets the requirements of ARPA. Our sidewalks around the courthouse are not very wide. So if you have someone who's on a walker trying to get into or out of the building, if they meet someone walking, it's a problem. For, for, I think this is the street over here by Norvell's and Lars Cheesecake. When, when you park there, if you pull all the way up, well, then your car blocks some of the sidewalk to begin with. So that's the first problem, wider sidewalks. The other one is, in the event that the electricity goes off, if y'all remember, we've had that a couple of Fridays when the electricity goes off. If you have someone who works in your building who is in need of the elevator to get out, then they can't get out. So I don't know if we need a generator to run the elevator or what we, no. I mean, I'm going to count it. It is funny.
That's not, I mean, that's not a bad idea. It's one of those, is it worth spending this to get this?
Right. But it's ADA and public access is what I thought. So if we, if we, as we're looking through this process, that is something that would help any handicap person in Titus County better be able to use.
And when we're out of electricity, we go home, I fear. You have to look at anything you do.
That's right. We do have, we, we do have to go home. But, but, and along those lines, we can't leave one person here because they are not able to get out of the building.
That's right.
Now, we've made arrangements and we have someone who's, you know, lined up to help them get out. And it may not be permanently. But in any case, as we're going through this and looking at needs that we have, I, I know that we have that need today. So that's up for y'all to decide. Again, we knew the project like that? I don't know whether you are interested in that. And it is just one current employee, but I can see how that would also impact anyone who, who needs to come, you know, into the courthouse for whatever reason. They don't have to come when the electricity's off.
Well, in my opinion, if you're going to go to that much trouble, you ought to completely redo this west side of the courthouse and put a double roll of parking back in there. That's just me. And you've got the project of the annex over there across the street that I, I think is extremely important. We're still waiting on some drawings from the Historical Commission, but I would anticipate that being a, you know, $200,000 project. I think I'll put that together. I don't know how you all feel about, about sidewalk job. If you're going to go to that kind of trouble, I think you ought to look at the entire landscape outlook over there. You'd have to move some monuments and things like that. Do you want to set a future date?
Sure.
See what Mark's schedule is. We've got an existing commissioner's court on August 8th that we could dovetail into at the end of that meeting. But again, we're, we'll work around your busy schedule.
Okay. Looks like I am obligated on, on that date, Judge.
Later that week?
Uh, yeah, it looks like the 9th is open. The 11th is open. Either one of those work.
Thursday, the 11th?
Yes, sir.
Calendar on August the 11th, 10 a.m. It's a Thursday to meet back after we submit the, by August 1st target. August 11th, Thursday, 10 a.m. Let's go ahead and do that, Mark.
Okay. Got it. We'll, but once again, we'll be looking at the requests that are forwarded to us. We'll be getting y'all some more information as far as the, who the ARDOF contracts were awarded to here in the county. Is there anything else specific that y'all would like us to be trying to obtain any more information on, Mark?
Just to kind of summarize, in my head, things we're going to work on, road materials. Uh, what do we call it? A haul truck? What do you call it?
Shared equipment.
Pull truck, big pull truck. What other pieces?
Uh, tanker truck.
Water?
Uh, oil.
Tree trimming bucket truck?
Bucket truck.
Who's most familiar with these items? That could come up with prices and put that in the form of one of these requests?
I've got some of them. I, I've got written down here, the haul truck, the truck, the real truck. I've got them written down here that I've been putting in for a question name. I'll try to get some ballpark figures going with that one too.
Whatever you want to add, you can just put that in your, on your request. But it's called, it's called a what? A reclamer?
I think it's a good, good time to get rid of that old one and add it to, maybe another one.
Thank y'all very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any closing comments or ready to adjourn? Motion to adjourn is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.